... The leg, under. So boss, you're wearing short pants. You're meeting. You know how to do it.
I don't know. I just have this conversation.
Well, there was two. We remember. It's like we stepped in.
Oh, I know. I think you're gonna save me. You're gonna save me. Yeah.
What they made the kid. He's dead. It burns him. It's dead over the oxygen place.
Smith. That one not so good. Long enough.
Who used to come to IS?
Yeah, listen to that audio.
Sleep. Yeah. Always had a pen to pen behind there.
Death?
Who's smart kid?
Oh, you just don't want to.
Seven o'clock. Let's call meeting order. Uh, before we do roll call, we have some, uh, I have to swear and the clerk treasurer. Meet your end over there. Okay, raise your right hand. I live the parent.
I live the parent.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
Clerk treasurer.
Clerk treasurer.
In and for the city of Hastings.
In and for the city of Hastings.
County of Berry.
County of Berry.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, this is subscribed and sworn before me, the 12th day of August, 2024. Congratulations. You sign this right here and we'll give it to the new clerk treasurer. Did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, roll call.
Uh, Barlow.
Here.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Brim.
Brim, thank you. Jarvis.
Here.
McLean.
McLean, yes.
McLean. Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Rezegi. Stenzel Barton.
Here.
Tassiva.
Here. Please rise for pledge. Got it, thank you. Okay, pledge allegiance to the republic of America.
To the republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, in your packet, you have the agenda for tonight. We have one addition. Uh, at your desk, you have a sub grant agreement. Uh, so we'll add that to 10L. Whatever you want that, Sarah.
Someone was asking something.
10L. Anything else?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 10L, the sub grant agreement.
Motion by McLean, supported by Brim. Brim. Uh, to approve the agenda, uh, as amended. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same. Also in your packet, you have the minutes of the July 22nd, 2024 regular meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Brim, supported by Barlow, to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes as presented. Roll call.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Uh, public hearings, we have non-public comment. Anybody here at this time would like to address the council? Okay, uh, formal recognition and presentation. Uh, Dave Hatfield's not here tonight. I think he's got a planning commission meeting, but, uh, hopefully we'll get him here the next meeting. Uh, items for action by unanimous consent. Uh, consider motion to approve Dale Boulder as officer delegate and Dan King as alternate delegate to the Michigan Employee Retirement System, their annual convention, uh, October 10th through the 11th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I support. I will be in attendance as well.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to approve, uh, Dale Boulder as officer delegate and Dan King as alternate delegate to the Michigan, uh, Michigan Employee Retirement System, MERS Annual Conference, October 10th through 11th, 2024. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, in your packet, you have four invoices totaling 143,840.50, as detailed in your attachment. Uh, that's for two new trucks, uh, concrete and excavating and home improvements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the four invoice voices totaling 1,000, 1,000, 143,840.50.
Uh, support. Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis, to receive place on file, four invoices totaling 143,840.50, as detailed in the attachment. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Tassiva.
Yes. Uh, next item, item C, consider Mayor Tassiva's appointment of City Manager Sarah Maury Cale to the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee for a three-year term. Sarah's had so much fun doing this, she, uh, she wants to sign up again, you know. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, to appoint, uh, Mayor, uh, City Manager Sarah Maury Cale to the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee for three years.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are you serious? You, is this something you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if he was being sarcastic or not, I'm sorry. Just the way you said that and the way you looked, I'm thinking.
Well, she, she really enjoys it. Yeah, she looks forward to it once a month on Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I, you know, I didn't want to force you into something you really didn't want to do.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Especially if you appoint me, I think.
Okay.
Was that sarcasm?
You know for a sarcastic.
No, their part.
Yeah, I'm really lost, I can't decipher.
Okay, motion by Bowers, supported by Rezegi, to appoint, uh, Sarah Maury Cale to the Solid Waste Oversight Committee for a three-year term. Any discussion? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item A, consider adoption of resolution 20, 2024 dash 21 to approve signatories for financial institution accounts for the city of Hastings. The reason we're doing this is because we have a new clerk treasurer. Do I hear a motion to approve? A resolution.
Motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean, to adopt resolution 2024 dash 21 to approve signatories for financial institution accounts for the city of Hastings. Any discussion?
We're just adding the one name.
We have to do this every time we change clerk treasurer.
Right, so we're just adding the one name. Okay. That's all the discussion.
Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, consider adoption of resolution 2024 dash 22, approve the transfer and assignment of a commercial rehab exemption certificate from Hastings Center LLC at 800 West State Street to LLC for property located at 802 West State Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Nesbit, Brim, or Bowers? Okay, mo, just a second. Motion made by Nesbit, supported by Bowers, to adopt resolution 2024 dash 22, to approve the transfer and assignment of a commercial rehab exemption certificate from Hastings Center LLC to 800 West State Street LLC for property located at 802 West State Street. Go ahead with your question.
Is, uh, this what's known as TIF money?
No.
No? Nothing like that?
No, this is a tax exemption on the improvements that were done in the past.
Okay. Is TIF money something totally different than this?
Yes.
Does it work the same, or is?
No.
Well, I need to be educated on this. I mean, I got, you know, and, uh, this afternoon, reading all kinds of papers and everything, and I'm not, I feel comfortable with this, this one. It's the other one I don't feel as comfortable, because even says at the end of it, well, the financial implications are going to be later. And I just don't feel comfortable what the financial implications are later. But this one I can live with, because the school's not involved.
So the reason why on the other ones that says the financial implications are later is because all you're doing tonight is setting the hearings, so you're not taking any action that's going to have any financial implication. But when we do have those on the agenda and have the public hearings, all that information will be related.
So then we will be able to say yea or nay on how much money we're giving away.
Correct.
Or allow.
And the two incentives, the TIF incentive and the, um, tax abatement incentive, go hand in hand. So we'll present the whole package to you.
But that's the next item on the road.
But that is another item.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just, you know, because I'm going to vote on this one, I just wanted to get some clarification, because I guess I'm being an honest, uh, council member saying I didn't educate myself on these other ones that I voted on, and I should have dug into them more, like I did today. And I kind of got an idea, and I feel comfortable with this one. I didn't feel comfortable, okay? So I'm all set, thank you. I need to be educated, and that's comfortable.
No, I'm glad you asked this question, please, here.
Yeah, well, I bet everybody else knew the answers, but I didn't.
No. Uh, any other questions? The, the question I have, uh, and how many of these, how many of these, uh, rehab exemptions? We have like three of them out here now? Do we have one across the street? Didn't we give one to Mar Helder? Yep. And, and down there, right? At the Plaza? I think, I think we have like three of them.
Well, the, the one that, uh, you're being requested to transfer, this was the one that was created, uh, for the former Kmart building. When they converted, you know, obviously Kmart went bankrupt, went out of business, left that huge hole in that center. So, uh, they requested, they being Hastings Center LLC requested the commercial rehab exemption certificate, uh, to assist them with the build out, the internal build out of that, uh, facility. And what it did is basically froze the property taxes at the value that were, uh, there in 2020. Uh, and all the additional work that they put inside was basically capped until 2030.
Oh, we, we have, Dan, I'm, uh, I'm just trying to... We have what they call neighborhood, some kind of neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's what they got over here.
They received a neigh, neighborhood, or a neighborhood enterprise zone was created for that, as, and there, and there's two similar terms. There's commercial rehabilitation districts, and then there's commercial redevelopment districts. Both of them have different, uh, tax abatement structures. The, the one for the transfers was the rehab, because they were basically rehabbing. Uh, the other one that, um, I believe is, uh, requesting for a public hearing on, is also rehabilitation, but it's for a brand-new construction for the former roll call site.
Right, right, right. I'm just, I'm just trying to, in my own head, trying to figure out the difference. One's a neighborhood, and this one here is a, is a commercial. So this commercial rehab exemption cer- certificate stays with the property no matter who owns it, but we have to approve the transfer.
Correct. City, the local government unit has to approve the transfers via resolution to be sent to the state tax commission to continue the, basically the tax abatement through the end of the term. It doesn't extend the term.
Well, I need to know if, if somebody, somebody new has bought the property. But it's not, they're not asking for this, uh, certificate. Uh, they're asking for it to be upgraded because of the taxes, but they're not asking to, uh, to, uh, they're not going to be doing any more rehab down there.
No, no, this is just to continue the current, um, tax abatement through the end of the period, which, uh, is December 31st to 30.
Yeah.
It was the original ten, tenure term. That's not being extended.
Okay, so it's not starting over again?
No, no.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Uh, item C, consider approval, uh, of the mayor and city clerk to sign a listing agreement extension from August 16th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, and price reduction from 99,900 to 79,900 with Miller Real Estate for city-owned industrial property located at 1500 Star School Road. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Nesbit, supported by Brim.
Yep.
Uh, motion made by Nesbit, supported by Brim, to approve the mayor and city clerk to sign a listing agreement extension, uh, from August 16th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, and price reduction from 99,900 to 79,900 with Miller Real Estate for city-owned industrial property located at 1500 Star School Road. Discussion.
How long has it been on the market total? Do we know? Do I know? Does anybody know?
Um, actually, it was, uh, February of '23, so about a year and a half.
And it's been advertised, and it's, and sold?
Miller Real Estate has had the active listing since that time. Uh, there's been some interest. Early on, there was some interest, but the offers came in extremely low.
Um... Is it because of its location?
Well, it's...
I'm sorry, Dan.
Um, it's, the location is fine, uh, but this is the parcel that has a square cut out of the, kind of the northern section of it, where it used to be quality, uh, quality floor, or floor style products, used to be in that building years ago.
They're all messed up.
So, it's, it's...
Yeah, I know.
For a better word, it's a goofy parcel, because the property, our, the city's property surrounds this square parcel that sits in the northern section of the 14-acre parcel. So for practical purposes, it's 14.4 acres, but really, it's not that big, because anybody who wants to develop it are likely going to develop the, the southern rectangular piece of it.
Right.
So, um, you know, it's been on the market since February of '23.
A year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half. It's, we've been in discussions, staff's been in discussions with Miller Real Estate for several months, discussing, you know, the, the, the likelihood that a price adjustment is probably in order, uh, so we came to a mutual agreement, and that's what we're recommending.
Like a lot to go to 20,000. That's just me, not a realtor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, once again, we have a motion by Nesbit, uh, supported by Brim, to approve the Hastings, the mayor and the city clerk signing a listing agreement extension from August 16th, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, and a price reduction of 99, from 99,900 to 79,900 with Miller Real Estate for city-owned industrial property located at 1500 Star School Road. No further comment, roll call.
Stenzel Barton.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item D, consider approval of the purchase of four sets of personal protective clothing, turnout coat and pants with Allied Fire Sales in the amount of 10,458,056 dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll support.
Okay, motion made by Stenzel Barton, uh, supported by McLean, to approve the purchase of four sets of personal protective clothing, uh, turnout coat and pants from Allied Fire Sales in the amount of 10,458,056 cents. Comments, questions? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Item E, consider approval of the proposal by MC, MSCA Group for professional services for police department workspace improvements, a sum of 6,500 dollars. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Support. So moved.
I'll make a motion. I'll support that motion.
At all. So I got three people talking over me.
I started it out.
You started, I'll support it, yeah.
I'm trying to make sure you don't have to write Terry's name so much.
Yeah, it's all right, I've already abbreviated his name. Okay, motion made by Nesbit, supported by Brim, uh, to approve the proposal by MS, MSCA Group for professional services, uh, for police department workspace improvements for a sum of 6,500 dollars. Any more discussion? Go ahead.
Uh, is this going to be the same footprint that they're going to be working with?
Yeah.
Or they're not getting more space? Just laying it all down?
More effectively, yeah.
Is it going to include the cost of moving them out of there while it's redone?
So this is just for the design and the construction documents?
Oh, that's just, okay, gotcha.
Any other questions?
I just have a point of clarification. On the packet we see, we received on, over the internet here, it says MCSA Group. In the printed version here is MSCA, so which one is the correct one?
It's MCSA.
MCSA, okay.
Isn't it MCSA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I read it the wrong way, too. Or did I read it the right way? I don't know. I always notice. It used to be, it used to be MC Smith, is what it was. Okay, we have a motion by Nesbit, supported by Brim, to approve the proposal by MC Smith Group to professional, for professional services for the police department workspace improvements for a sum of 6,500 dollars. No further discussion, roll call.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stenzel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Like the way she says your name.
A lot of people do.
All right. Item F, consider approval of the proposal from Allied Fire Sales to complete engine repairs to 1999 ladder truck 836 for 5,991,62 cents. I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Bowers, supported by McLean, to approve the proposal from, from Allied Fire Sales to complete engine repairs to 1999 ladder truck 836 for 5,991,62 cents. Questions? I had a question earlier tonight, and I don't know if, I don't know if he's afraid to ask you, but is that a lot of time for a water pump repair, 24 hours?
I forgot.
So, well, not particularly sure if they have to pull the radiator and most of the left side of the engine off.
I tried to, I tried to explain it to the council member, but...
I'm sorry, that's, that's me, because I wrote myself a note. 24 hours labor for repair of a truck's water pump? I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
And it's, and he tried to explain it. Now, could you explain it again while I'm paying attention?
So the way, where the wire's located on the front of that truck, it's, uh, you have to take all the radiator off, all the fan, the fan, all the belt assemblies, and then pretty much take a, a good chunk of the left side of the engine apart to get to it. It's quite an extensive...
So it is reasonable.
Yes, it is.
24 hours seemed like a lot.
I double-checked that with the bottom one.
All right, thank you.
When I first got the quote, I went, what?
And, and I'm sorry, I missed the question when he offered it.
And there was also the laboring there to transport it, we didn't have the manpower to take it to the shop.
I understand.
Any further discussion? I'll read it one more time. Uh, motion by Bowers, supported by McLean, to approve a proposal from Allied Fire Sales to complete engine repairs to 1999 ladder truck 836 for 5,991,62 cents. No further discussion, roll call.
Brim.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Tassavah.
Yes. Item G, consider approval of the Metro Act permit extension request by K E P S Technologies for a five-year period ending August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-nine. Do I hear my?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Okay, motion made by Stensel Barton, supported by Jarvis, to approve the Metro Act permit extension request, uh, by K E P S Technologies for a five-year period ending August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-nine. Discussion.
What does A C D dot net provide?
Some type of telecommunications. I, I don't know very much about this company.
One of their pieces of equipment, you'll see it over by the fire department every day when you drive by, it's a crooked telephone pole with a bunch of equipment on top of it. And we have, uh, how many did you say around town, you thought?
I believe eight.
They've had this agreement with the city for ten years, right? So they're asking for an extension now, so. Hey, any further comment?
I remember ten years ago, it was a big issue and quite extensive and the state got involved, so, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Jarvis, uh, to approve Metro Act permit extension request by K E P S Technologies for a five-year period ending August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-nine. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Tassavah.
Yes. Okay, item H, consider approval of Chief Jordan to trade unused S C B A and bottles to Allied Fire Sales in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as a credit to the Fire Department. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Nesbit, to approve, uh, Chief Jordan to trade, uh, unused S C B A and bottles to Allied Fire Sales in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as a credit to the Fire Department. Questions?
These, uh, S C B As can be used?
No, so, it's a little bit of history on the department, we added, added two additional trucks that we, uh, decommissioned. So those trucks held, um, seats for the S C B A to be in. So we don't have those seats anymore, because we decommissioned the trucks, we dropped two, two trucks out of the fleet. So when we did that, it created a surplus of packs that we can, quite frankly, if they're in a truck, they'll never get used. And so, we currently have, uh, will have fifteen, uh, air packs in the trucks, the firefighters to use. And these extra, we actually have an additional twelve sat on the floor, but we're just gonna sell ten of those and then keep two as a spare.
I understand.
Same with the bottles, I mean, they, the, 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 continue to keep all those bottles and those packs, we have to test them every single year whether we use them or not. And, so, just a, a, just a rundown, if we were to keep all those packs, and we tested them every year for fifteen years, it would be around twenty-two thousand dollars we would spend on equipment that we would never use.
All right.
But we have to do it every year if we have them.
I understand. Okay.
And then, just that, what we, what the plan is, is to purchase some much-needed safety equipment that we don't have budgeted, um, to, to go into service that we can use on a call regularly.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion by Barlow, supported by, who is that? Can't read my own writing.
Nesbit.
Nesbit.
Nesbit. Geez. Motion by Barlow, supported by Nesbit, to approve Chief Jordan to trade, uh, unused S C B A and bottles to Allied Fire Sales in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as a credit to the Fire Department. No further discussion, roll call.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Can't read my writing.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
Tassavah?
Yes. Uh, in your packet, you have a proposal from Burgess Surveying for twenty-twenty-four miscellaneous survey projects with a sum of nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll support.
Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brim, to approve the proposal from Burgess Surveying for twenty-twenty-four miscellaneous survey project with a sum of nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Questions? Roll call.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Tassavah?
Yes. Okay, in your packet, you have a, uh, consider adoption of Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three, delegating authority to conduct a public hearing to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Ms, uh, by McLean, supported by Barlow, to author, or adopt a Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three, delegating the authority to conduct a public hearing to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Questions?
Here's where I may need to be educated. They do mention TIF money here.
Yes.
TIF money on twenty-seven of the units. Is that what it's saying?
So it would be on the Brownfield qualifying actions that they're taking, mitigation actions. So things that they have to do because it's redevelopment of, of food property, basically. Um, as well as a housing TIF on a select number of units. So there's two different portions of the project that qualify for TIF funding.
So, why do we, if, if we approve this, are we approving that we're gonna allow them to do the TIF thing?
No, so, all, what this motion does is let the Brownfield Authority hold the public hearing on your behalf, but after that public hearing, they'll make a recommendation to the council regarding their Brownfield plan. So that will all come back here.
So, my, I guess my, my question is, how many people out in the public are even gonna know about this or even wanna make comment on it? We don't really have an answer yet, what this is gonna cost, right? Or is this something we have to do to do it?
So it's a step in getting the Brownfield plan approved. So what complicates this is that their financing package includes both the TIF, which is what this public hearing would be for, and the commercial rehabilitation exemption, which wouldn't take place until after the creation of the commercial rehab district, which you're also setting a public hearing for. So really, right now, we're just setting the stage to get to the point where we can even discuss the actual application and financing package.
Okay, well, I've, and I don't, the only thing, we're on N S C O's.
No, I understand.
Sometimes it comes back and they say, well, you voted on that before, and like you approved it.
The stuff comes up and it's, and, I, I understand why there's requirements for public hearings and things, but it's kinda like, well, can we just get to the point? And this is one of those projects where you kinda just wanna get there, but we have all these other requirements before we even get to the decision-making.
And they make, you know, a comment, you know, we're gonna have five employees, like, boy, am I excited, you know, what's that gonna do? It's not gonna do anything, we don't have a city income tax or anything, so. I, you know, I just, it's just confusing, and I don't want it to come back and haunt me and say, oh, yeah, we approved that, and we're gonna let them get the TIF money, 'cause that could be an awful lot of money that.
Sure.
That we're giving away, I guess. It's not really giving away. I'm all for, we wanna do something, but I wanna be careful. I mean, do we need to go ten years? No, but I don't mind helping somebody for three or four or five years, because when you first initially get started, you know, when you start a business, if, if you make it five years, you might make it the rest of the way, but if you don't make it the five years, you're done, so. I, I, you know, I'm for it, but I just wanna be careful not to give away the farm either, you know.
No, absolutely.
'Cause I know the county, the county, uh, you know, was the problem with, uh, well, the, the coun, the council in, uh, Middleville approved TIF money for the former bowling alley, and then two of the commissioners say, why are we giving more money away? And, you know, that kinda perked me up, what do you mean, TIF money, you're giving it away, so, you know, I just wanna be careful. 'Cause it's gonna go, it's gonna go to the county and the schools also, they have to approve it.
Uh, you don't think any of this affects school money?
No, we, we're on Brownfield, don't go to county.
No, I mean, well, okay, we'll, yeah, we'll get the other way, okay.
So, at, it, it would affect the D D, it, it would go to the D D A in part. Um, so at this point, all we're doing is scheduling the hearings. What ma, what's going to make this complicated is that there's several steps where the Brownfield TIF plan discussion and public hearing is separated from the commercial rehab district, and then ultimately that, but we're, Dan and I have been working the schedule to try to get it in front of you as one package, because it really is one financing package, where you can see where all the funding's coming from, how it's going to affect the city and the D D A district, so you really can see it all at once. Unfortunately, because of the requirements, splitting it up and having these things kinda go parallel, it does get confusing, but we're going to do our best, and I think we've worked it out scheduling-wise, to have it brought to you for final approval as one package.
Okay, well, I hope so, you know, I'm gonna make it simple for me.
We'll do our best.
Okay, thank you, get your hands out just for me. Everybody else knows about this, so, but I'm paralyzed, okay?
Al stole my thunder, 'cause I left a bunch of notes, I highlighted stuff, and you brought it all, you brought it all into it.
Well, thank you. Is that a compliment?
It was, it is.
Okay.
All we are agreeing to is the authority to conduct a public hearing.
That is correct.
That's it. I had other exceptions in there, but you had it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, and, and I, I, I encourage anybody that, uh, you know, there's, I don't care how long you've been on the council, things come up that we just don't understand.
Right.
So we kinda, kinda depend on staff to give us explanation. I'd like to see, and anybody has any questions, get ahold of you, you, Sarah or Dan, but, uh, so all we're doing tonight is setting a public hearing. Okay?
Granting the authority to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to hold the public hearing.
So, any other questions? We have a motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, uh, to adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three, delegating the authority to conduct a public hearing to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. No further questions, roll, roll call.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Tassavah?
Yes. Oh, here we are. Okay, uh, item K, consider scheduling a public hearing for August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, at the city council meeting to hear comment and make determination on the establishment of a commercial rehab district for property located at three twenty-eight and four twenty East Mill Street, formerly the Royal Coach site. Do I hear motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support. Okay, we have a motion by Brim, supported by Nesbit, to, uh, schedule a public hearing for August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, city council meeting to hear comment and make a determination on the establishment of a commercial rehab district for property located at three twenty-eight and four twenty East Mill Street, formerly the Royal Coach building. Discussion.
Who technically owns that property?
Uh, very community foundation.
Okay.
I read a question, have they managed to jump through all the hurdles from the state, uh, before we go through all this? I know that they were looking at.
Have they gotten the letter of interest, or they expect it shortly?
They expect it shortly, is what they said.
So they're ninety-nine percent there.
Okay. I hate to go through all this and then find out that the state says no.
Oh, absolutely, and that's why we waited till now to, to schedule these hearings.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion by Brim, uh, supported by Nesbit, to schedule a public hearing for August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, at the city council meeting to hear comment and make a determination on the establishment of a commercial rehab district for property located at three twenty-eight and four twenty East Mill Street, formerly the Royal Coach site. No further comments, roll call.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Tassavah?
Yes. Okay, item J was added to our, our packet tonight, uh, subcontract agreement. So, you wanna say anything about this, Sarah?
Um, so this is a grant that we were approved for almost a year ago.
It's been a while.
For the streetscape improvement, um, and M E D C finally got their ducks in a row, um, and ironed out their agreement with The Right Place. We're actually a sub-receipient of The Right Place, The Right Place actually holds the agreement with M E D C. So this is a sub, uh, grant agreement, uh, that we have with them, ensuring that we'll meet the milestones and do what we said we would do in the application. We've already done all of this, obviously. Um, as soon as we can, Dan will submit the reimbursement request for the first half, and then turn around and submit the reimbursement request for the second half, um, 'cause the product is, uh, essentially finished at this point. So the total grant amount was, I lost the page, I knew I would do that, four hundred, seven hundred dollars. It's almost weird. It's four hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So that's obviously very helpful for the total project. So we're very grateful to The Right Place for being willing to house us as a sub-receipient and working with us with M E D C on, on the half.
I'll make the motion to approve the sub-grant agreement.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis. Do we need to, uh, approve the people that sign it, or just, we just agree to the?
Yeah, Dan, uh, we, we think we probably should, it's probably been us that way.
So we need a motion to approve the grant and authorize Mayor and Clerk to sign it?
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, the sub-grant agreement, with the signers being Sarah, the city manager, and the clerk.
Don't want me to sign it, huh? Motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis, supported by, to approve the agreement with, uh, this, uh, sub-agreement and authorize the, the city manager and clerk to sign it. Any further discussion?
I figured you had too much to do, all right?
That's all right. I gotta do anything, Pam.
Feel bad.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Barlow?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yep.
Brim?
Yes.
Jarvis?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Nesbit?
Yes.
Rezegi?
Yes.
Stensel Barton?
Yes.
Tassavah?
Yes. Okay, staff presentation, policy discuss, policy discussions. We have a presentation by staff intern, Aaron Sutter, about sidewalk conditions. Aaron?
Hi, everybody, I'm Aaron Sutter, I'm a, I'm a, our summer intern. And, uh, I was, I've been working the past couple of months on, uh, making a map for the, uh, sidewalk conditions and locations and, uh, any obstructions in the sidewalks. Alright, so, uh, the different types of obstructions are, uh, cracking, which is, as it sounds, any cracking or crumbling in the sidewalk. Uh, settling, which is any, uh, anywhere the sidewalk may have, uh, sunk under the other sidewalk panels. This sometimes happens with, uh, cracking, or it can, uh, it'll happen at a tree branch or tree roots, and sometimes it happens between sidewalk panels. Um, vegetation, that's any vegetation overgrowth, so brass, weeds, uh, maybe bushes going over the sidewalk. Um, uplifting, that's a vertical change in height, usually lifting up at least two, two inches. And, uh, this usually happens with cracking or settling, and usually, uh, between sidewalk panels. Um, vertical obstructions, so that's any, uh, anything blocking, uh, the sidewalk from about three to seven feet in the air, blocking it off by at least two feet. And it, uh, that could usually be branches. And then, uh, there's fixed, fixed obstructions, so that's any anchored option, objects that, uh, reduce the sidewalk width to less than four feet, and usually benches, telephone poles, stuff like that. And then, uh, anywhere where the sidewalk isn't ADA compliant, so this is, areas where the sidewalk doesn't meet the requirements of the American, Americans with Disabilities Act. Alright, so here's an example of cracking. This is, uh, at Madison Street. And there's a map symbol that I, uh, used to put on the map. And here's an example of settling, it can be kinda hard to see, but, uh, in person, it's, uh, a lot more pronounced than in the picture. And then, that's the, there's the map symbol I used to, uh, represent it on the map. Here's an example of vegetation, this is on, um, East Thorn Street, and, uh, you can see a lot of weeds and grass covering up the sidewalk, and, uh, making it difficult to walk across, there's a map symbol I used for it. And here's uplifting, you see it lifting up a couple inches where the, uh, roots are underneath the, underneath the sidewalk, and there's the map symbol I used for it. Then here's a vertical obstruction, that's a, uh, that's a branch, obviously, uh, blocking the sidewalk. And if you were to walk right into it, you would hit your head on it. There's a map symbol I used. And then, here's a fixed obstruction, so this is the telephone pole, this is on East Mill Street, and it's, uh, blocking the sidewalk, making it less than four feet wide. And then, uh, here's a non-ADA compliant, um, crossing. So, this one can be a little hard to see as well, but, uh, the, it's a steep slope going into the crossing, and that's the map symbol I used for it. Alright, so this is just a map showing, uh, where all the obstructions are in the city, and, uh, what they are, obviously. So, here are the different condition ratings for the sidewalk. So we have excellent, which is a five rating, that means that there's no obstructions, it's ADA compliant, no, uh, no, uh, nothing cutting off, uh, mobility. Good is a four, so that would be, uh, there may be some minor obstructions, minor cracking, minor settling, but nothing that will, uh, hurt mobility. And then we have a three, so that means there could be some moderate issues, moderate cracking, moderate settling, maybe some moderate vegetation, it may or may not be ADA compliant, depending on the sidewalk. And then, uh, four, which is a two rating, so that means there's, uh, some, a few sep, or severe issues that could, uh, hinder mobility, and then, these will, these are never gonna be ADA compliant, and, uh, there may be some discontinuities as well. And then very poor is a one, that means that there's severe issues throughout the entirety of the sidewalk. Uh, will not be, you really won't even be able to walk on them, and, uh, yeah, it won't be ADA compliant. Alright, so this is a, uh, perfect, excellent, excellent condition, five sidewalk, you see there's. You see there's no issues. It's on the north side of West Pond Street. And then this is a good sidewalk. So this one's, this one's new. Minor issues with some vegetation covering the, uh, sides there. And then, uh, there's some minor settling, which is maybe hard to see, but is there. And that, and then, uh, this is a bare-conditioned sidewalk at three. There's some, uh, minor, there's some moderate cracking you see, moderate settling. Uh, there, and some uplifting caused by the cracking as well. That's on the west side of South Dibble Street. And then this is a two-rated sidewalk, poor condition. Um, it says some severe crackings, settling, uh, vegetation blocking the, blocking bits of the sidewalk. And also at the end, you can see there's a vertical obstruction with the branches from the, from the tree there. And that's, and then, uh, it's a very poor-conditioned sidewalk, a one. This is the one I used for the, uh, vegetation example. You see severe cracking vegetation throughout the entirety of the sidewalk. The sidewalk's being overtaken basically by grass and weeds. And then, uh, this is our map for the, uh, sidewalk conditions, showing, uh, where all the sidewalks are and where they aren't. So along with, uh, the colors that were shown in the last few slides, purple, uh, represents where there's no sidewalk. And then this is a, uh, map showing both the obstructions and the conditions. And, uh, it can be hard to see from this, uh, from this zoomed out. So this is the, uh, north of the city, north of, of, uh, Thornapple River. Uh, you can see, uh, west of, it looks like Broadway. There aren't a lot of sidewalks. East, you have, uh, some, some pretty good sidewalks. As you can see, a lot of obstructions though. Next. Then this is, uh, east of the city. Some of the poorer quality sidewalks here. And then as you go south, there's, uh, there aren't many sidewalks. Then this is the, uh, west side of the city. These sidewalks are mostly better quality, uh, not as many obstructions and, uh, worse sidewalks in this area as well. And then this is the south of the city. Uh, sidewalks are, are pretty good quality here as well. And then here's our downtown. Most of the sidewalks are new around here, so sidewalks are of good quality, not many obstructions. All right, that's all.
Oh, I have a question.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Nice job, by the way.
Thank you.
So did you, um, by chance, put like, uh, percentage value to like, what percentage of our sidewalks are excellent? What percentage of our sidewalks are good? What percentage is fair?
I, I didn't do that, but it would be very easy for me to.
Okay. Um, another question I had is, um, you developed this in GIS?
Yep.
And it's there and available for Sarah to continue to access?
Yep.
Awesome. Nice job.
Yep.
I use GIS a lot too, so, nice job.
I just wanted, before the meeting even started, I told the mayor that I thought it was very well done. Do you have this photography in hi-def?
Uh, it's whatever, uh, definition it was, was on the phone that I took the picture with, so...
Oh, you took, uh, uh, what about the, the graphics?
Uh, yes, they're in hi-def.
All right, so it could be enlarged and we could zoom in on them?
Yeah.
That was nice. I, I thought it was well done as well. And I'd all say that.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, the GIS system is something that a lot of municipalities use to, uh, look at roads and infrastructure and...
I usually, uh, mine's, I'm familiar with...
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you, that's where, yeah, sorry, I was confused.
I, I, I knew it was something like that.
Yeah.
I didn't know if they...
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Aaron.
Good job, Aaron.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. So how much longer are you going to be, uh, here?
Uh, should be about a couple more weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Um, I wanted to give you a quick update on where we are so far with negotiations with Rutland Township regarding, uh, 425 agreement or other agreement, um, as they would prefer to, um, have water and sewer extended to the property at 43 and 37 for a, a future Meyer store. Um, we've met a couple of times. Uh, the first meeting was just talking about, you know, some general, um, thoughts and feelings about, uh, the area and agreements that had taken place before and just gathering some information about some other sewer agreements that already existed. They did present us with a proposal, uh, at the second meeting, um, essentially, uh, requesting that the city extend water and sewer service to the area. And then they would levy a, uh, two mil special assessment and keep one mil for maintenance and repair and then, uh, give a mil to the city for unspecified costs that are involved in providing the service. Essentially, any, any agreement that's purely the extension of water and sewer service, where we don't share in the, uh, benefit of the additional taxable value, really is not a benefit to the city directly. We can, um, basically break even at best on water and sewer charges. It's not something that brings additional revenue, um, to the city. So, uh, previous agreements, our previous urban services agreements, we've had three iterations of, uh, the same agreement. Uh, the area that we're talking about, um, has been included in those earlier versions of, uh, the agreement. So this isn't really a new thing that we're talking about. It's really just a new iteration of, of the urban service agreement. So they've expressed concern about the amount of property that would be included in a new 425 agreement. And it is a larger portion of the, uh, potential urban service area than, uh, what has been, um, done in previous, uh, iterations of this agreement. But we haven't really had the opportunity to look through the numbers and really see what the costs are, how much taxable value really is generated here right now versus what it would be, um, if a Meyer was, uh, constructed. So we do have a lot of those figures now. We don't have, uh, information about the cost of the installation of the water and sewer system. We're working with the developer on that. We are working with, uh, the county EDA and West Michigan Planning Commission on a potential federal grant, uh, for an extension, if it was to occur. And also talking internally, uh, with utility staff about how the connections would be made, what type of standards we want to see there. So, um, now that we have some actual numbers, um, that I've put together, that we can really share with the township about how it would affect taxable value, how it would affect, more specifically, the residents or the property owners who are involved and their tax bills. It is a little bit, um, apples and oranges when you're looking at the city's tax bill versus Rutland Township's because there's a lot of things that they include in special millages that are included in our operating millage. So we don't have a separate millage for fire or roads or library. That's all coming out of the operating millage. Whereas it's not in their operating millage. They have some, um, additional millages that way. So, um, we are hopefully going to sit down with them soon. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to set that meeting. Um, but I'm hopeful that when they look at the, the actual numbers of how much revenue's actually generated there for them right now versus what it would be, uh, when the new Meyer store is built. Even with the agreement that we've used three other times before, um, they would be generating quite a bit more, uh, in revenue than they do currently. So, um, I'm hopeful that, uh, having those figures and being able to talk about that data, um, will be helpful in moving the discussion forward. Uh, but I think that, uh, every, everybody, um, that we've spoken to from the township, Dan and I are certainly interested in having Meyer come and are hopeful that we can find a solution and an agreement that works with everybody. No one has spoken unfavorably, uh, about the project. It's just, how is it that we can get there in a way that's beneficial to both the city and the township? So that's, um, really where we are with that right now. Does anybody have any questions, um, at this point, that I can answer about that process? All right, awesome. Or questions about anything else, I guess?
Any questions, Sarah? If you open the door, questions about anything.
Anything! Thank you.
Okay, uh, also in the city manager report, you have, uh, Public Service Director, uh, Travis Tate's report. Do you have anything to add, Travis?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions to Travis?
Well, there I am again.
There you go.
Uh, you have, now you. The city has a dead tree on your property in front of my home. Who do I call to get a pig steak?
You can call me.
Would you make sure I get a pig steak on my dead tree on your property, or the city's property?
Yes, I'll write that down.
Okay, thank you. You know where I live.
I do.
Any other questions? Okay, also in your packet, you have, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Mark Jordan's month report. Anything to add, Mark?
Oh, I think I'd like to just make a comment. Um, we hit a, we hit a very good milestone, um, this year. In July, we do all our NFPA testing. And, um, I'm pleased to, uh, report that every single truck passed DOT and pump testing. So I think it's a pretty good...
Nice job.
...achievement for us.
I have a question. Hard to believe.
Really? Go ahead.
Are you looking for a second full-time person or do you need to replace the full-time person?
We're replacing him on this no longer basis. Of course, no longer with us.
Is the first, your full-time employee, do they go out on all the ambulance runs?
No.
Who, who does that? Is everybody a first responder or...
So all ambulance runs are run by Mercy Ambulance, which is a private organization for the city. We respond if they either need help or if they're unavailable on other calls. And then we respond on any ambulance calls that Mercy's not responding to.
So Mercy gets the calls first?
For the, yeah, for EMS calls, correct.
Okay.
Car accidents, things like that, well, we're both involved. Obviously, we all go on those calls.
Because I thought when, when we had the ambulance, that we came out with that pretty quick sometimes. And that's not the case anymore?
The Mercy's, I think I've reported that a couple of times over the last few months. Mercy's been doing a really good job of keeping two ambulances in service. And that really cuts down our, the amount of calls we have to run. So that really does help us out.
Thank you.
So I hear rumors you're going to have a pancake breakfast over there during Summer Fest.
That's right, on the 24th.
And you're cooking, right?
Absolutely.
No, but trust that.
I'm looking forward to it. Yeah, it's been too long since we've had any over there. And, uh, give us a public chance to look at what you got, the new equipment and, uh, you know, talk to the, uh, your volunteers. So I'll be there.
Good.
Okay, uh, reports and communications. In your packet, item A, August 2nd, 2024, draft minutes of the airport board. Uh, item B, July 17th, 2024, Direct TV LLC annual video report. Item C, August 2024 calendar. And I, I, and, uh, item D, August 6th, 2024, City Hastings preliminary election report, participation results. Do I hear a motion to accept those, uh, four items placed on file?
I support.
Motion or support?
I'll support.
Motion by Resegi, supported by Barlow, to accept items A through D and place them on file. Any comments? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Both same. Public comment? Go ahead. Get back to podium there and tell me who you are and I'll give you three minutes.
Oh, I'll talk quickly. My name is Amy Bass and I came tonight because Linda is my sister and I wanted to see her sworn in. Several years ago, I don't know how long ago, I read in the banner about city efforts to improve the streetscape in Hastings. And I must say, you've done a marvelous job. It's absolutely lovely. I hope there's money in the budget every year for those beautiful flowers. Also, every year, when that big banner goes up across the street advertising the farmer's market, as a retired teacher, I cringe when I see the apostrophe in Wednesdays and Saturdays. And I hope that rots really quickly and needs to be replaced so that those apostrophes can be taken out. And I will let you know that your new clerk is excellent about spotting things like that. And if you ever have any questions, just check with her. She has three sisters and we text every day. And if she doesn't know, she'll ask us and we'll get you the right answer. But thank you, it's very lovely.
Yes, she is.
Okay.
A resident of...
I didn't hear you say that, so I wondered.
Oh, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Rutland Township, bud.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor and council comments. Any comments tonight, uh, John?
Yes, I want to say that the block party downtown was a huge success and greatly appreciated by a lot of our residents.
Norman, any comments tonight?
Uh, yes, I must say that I've made a commitment with, um, Chief Dale Boulder that we're going to work on the ordinance for the vicious dogs in town. We've been running to quite a bit of that and, uh, some changes that I, I would like to see made. And we're going to work on that, so we will be dealing with that.
Nothing from me.
Al?
I've started off.
Just say you talked a lot tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Comments tonight?
As, as a lifelong dog lover, I want to be in on that. Is there a way I can get involved with that? I know, I know a lot about dogs. I care about dogs.
Any comments?
Heck, yeah, bring them on in. I can't guarantee what you want is going to be changed, but it all comes back to you folks right here. I, I know that when it comes to dogs, I love dogs. And I understand what you went through and I know, understand what I've been through. And I want what's best for everybody. And, and if, if I can get in on it...
Sir, that will be the challenge, getting everybody on the same page. But we're going to attempt to make a few changes and, um, it obviously probably won't, uh, make everybody happy, but whatever, uh, you know, the major part...
We can make a start at it.
Exactly.
I'll gladly help.
So...
The President of Virginia...
Don't any comments tonight?
I'm gone.
Nope.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'm not done.
Oh, 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 sorry. Sorry.
No signatures, no comments. Ah, what the heck, you know? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'm McLean.
Support.
Supported by Resegi to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.